I want to make a motion to the Department of State of Montana and to the Department of which stands on one nation under God in the vessel of the great and just to draw.
Congress, here's some other.
I'm prepared.
Oh, you can use. You can use the phone. I've been out in part three, Roger. How's the delivery? From July 7th to July 14th. You would have. That was 16. Maybe. Most likely not on that last day. The budget would have been for Monday. 14 was that Monday. We went on that Wednesday night. That was with the Panachek.
Oh, Tim, I think those minutes might have us.
What?
I'm willing to motion to accept the minutes from July 7th and divide 14 quarters.
Olin Baker?
Hi.
No, I'm a little bit angry about your signature because it's not on.
What's up with that statement? Do you leave an application?
So states on the end probably doesn't work. So that's how I recommend it. And I guess the reason is that. I was thinking of the state's head of town. I was looking for information for the baby. I have a question. He goes on to say. Avatar is accessible as long as they're on. That's what we require to have.
I think they're on. This is from parcel of Mount Ford on 278. I'm motion to accept. I'm prepared to file. I'm willing to be accepted. I've got a recommendation to be on. I'll send it. Can you accept it? Oh, with the paper? Ah, I don't know. I'll just try. That's fair. And I'll be home when we have this. Health coverage domestic partner?
Yeah, so this was just what has to know what. What now we would cover domestic partner. There's no official process. It's impossible to dispose. So we just need to. We want to prove who the domestic partner coverage is on. And I have no issues with with the background. You know, domestic partner coverage is in cost. It's a spouse.
No question. I know. So just getting it out is something that's small. It's a good question. It's so. So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept. Go on, we can get the best partner on the insurance coverage. It's not going to dispose. He was saying here for domestic partner except. Is there a year limit?
No. Didn't they used to say seven years?
Oh, yeah.
That's actually a policy. There's a hundred percent as common law. It's not that kind of thing.
Yeah. It's our language.
In discussion? Olin Baker? Who's here? You help me much?
Safe.
Or will you come back? We have to back to that. So we can come back to the minutes. I would say look pretty better. Five hours. We're choosing town insurance very well. We. What benefits do you benefit?
Yep.
We're choosing town insurance.
We have our own.
I say they should be there. I don't want to know where you are. So you get your guarantee.
Oh, it's. So I don't know. I don't know. I mean, this thing. We don't have anything to tell you about.
This is the first time.
What are the group we have?
Uh, association.
Is that the best?
Yeah.
So I don't know. I mean, since the summer, we're coming in. Yeah, I think so. I mean, I would think any group coming in here like a. Not a box, then have insurance.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just we're going to be required them to show us some type of insurance coverage. I don't know. But this is. We can certainly follow up on that, I guess.
Point of the road agent?
Typically, this is that we leave in July. So in each year, we have to appoint a road agent. So I make a motion and we appoint, reappointing events from July in this year to February next year. I'll send it.
In discussion? Olin Baker?
Uh, yeah.
Deputy Town Attorney Taxpayer.
Yeah, so these next two, the W Taxpayer, Town Attorney and the W Treasurer, since we don't have those positions still, I just want to make sure that we did the job posting up there. So that's all that is. I think I just need to find the cabinet. I think I still find those posties. Demonstration for anybody that's out. It's all.
And are they classified?
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, both of your places. So I guess while we're waiting for the chief, I have a couple of other items. I'll shoot that. So Jared, Jared reached out to me, the fire chief, and he said engine five, literal looks fine week. And so he was getting some company coming in fixed back. And it's probably going to be about $15,000. Then it's just wanted to make sure everybody is clear that that's happening. He's going to. After you lost someone that's in his book, it might not be aligned. I don't know. I'm a lot like that. And the other item is we obviously just met with Tony Ling and Tom Casella regarding our garbage pickup. Our contract is due to renew. Our contract is due to renew July 1st of this year. They had given us a one-year contract right now, three. Right now, what they've given us already is a 70% increase.
70%.
70% increase. Yes. So that's just for the monthly rate. And then there's the other. 25% increase on the solid waste disposal. So we asked to meet with Tony. So he is going to go back and try and give us a better rate. But also we talked about going to doing what they call the automatic garbage barrels. So the town would do is get townspeople would get a 95 gallon. At least it would be built into our contract. But it's a 95 gallon bucket garbage barrel. If you put out the new road, the new roadway without any, it will be automatically picked up by truckers without manual labor. Because this is what we're told, but if you're wrong that the automatic is less, more efficient, I guess, less expensive than doing manual. With guys being on that truck picks up the garbage and whatever. But the idea would be is whatever can fit in that 95 barrel is what you'd be limited to. However, there are options that you could like above and beyond what the town covers. You could rent another barrel at your expense for that, you know, for that additional, for that additional container. Right now, so we're kind of coming in. He's going to give us back to us with numbers because right now, if we're looking at this, we're looking at having a shortfall on our garbage line, just on the collection side of like $32,000 this year. We need to find, we need to find that in our budget. And that's like basically our 2% increase in the whole year. So he is going to work with us and trying to get him to pull that, get that rate down and trying to give us a price for it. Potentially starting with automatic pickup in the month of October. Lot of information. We're just getting it. So we're trying to decide whether what's any best and what's going to work with the town. So, yeah.
I think garbage is like top three in our expenses this time. And the second thing, I think the garbage, these barrels would be leased, right?
No, we, well, we would, yeah. They would incorporate the cost in our, in the contract with us over the time period. And then at the end of like a five-year contract, we would own them. So that.
And then there was an issue of anything went wrong with your barrel replacement parts.
They have 10. They have 10 year warranty. So if something happens with the barrel cover or something, the wheel breaks off or whatever, that's all replaced and you know, expensive town. So we just wanted to make everybody aware that, you know, garbage is not cheap getting back.
So about that transfer station?
You have a question, Lena? So with ready discussion on private roads with that.
So we're progress, as I said, you know, everything will get addressed. You know, we're just, we don't usually have.
He's very aware of the problems, lots of town. Or something else. A good. So when would this 70% increase start? It was proposed right away. I mean, we were supposed to start paying it on July.
We actually extended our regular rates to the month of July. So right now, if we're looking at that way, it starts in August. Because, and it's interesting, our contract will then go from July to June. But my opinion goes from James ready to be signed. They were not aware of. And because he's like, oh, the times are there. There is a, yes, other times we do sign you July to June, but our fiscal years. And he's like, oh, that's good to know, whatever. So, yeah, they're looking to do that increase. It would be potentially effective August, but I think they might kind of maybe be a little bit generous with us for August, but knowing that we're trying to work into some type of deal to hold in autumn. Which is what they're recommending, which I think is, I think is ultimately rather be a far.
He was not aware that we had a tax gap either, some of that. He could feel the pressure at the table.
White Spanish, didn't they come and talk to us?
Never got back to us.
They never gave us contract or they never gave us any proposal. So stay tuned. We're hoping to, he's going to go back and pull some more numbers and get us back and see where we can, where they can accomplish that and do this better deal. I'm very civil.
Hasn't been bad. Friday was warm, warmed up next day. I don't know how it hasn't been bad.
You have quotes for us?
I do. I don't know if you guys have them all or not.
I don't.
I do have, there's one copy. I believe I have another copy of it in my email. So you guys can have that. But I wouldn't lose it at this point.
No.
There were multiple quotes. One was from Bashons. As you can see, the number on there is just over 6,000. Second quote we got was from Joyce, which was a little over at least 7,000. And then Strogians. And Strogians, point blank, told me he couldn't touch either one of those, but he gave me a quote anyways. And we're all at 1,000. And speaking with all of them, we discussed if there were any other options based on the fact that it's in the basement. Mini splits would be an option, but because of the layout and the design of the building, you would be talking about putting in at least probably three mini splits, which still wouldn't essentially cool the whole building because of the way hallways, doorways, it would keep it bearable, but it would keep the main areas, the operational areas at a good temperature. Based on that conversation, the cost of to do that is far more than replacing life for life. So those three quotes are with replacing life for life. And all three companies, I discussed the mini split idea with them or other options. As far as air conditioning for the building, and they all said that what we currently have is probably the most cost effectively to do it. They would, they wouldn't recommend going another route because it would be far more of a cost.
So Scott, quick question for you regarding like Dashon and Joyce. Do you have a difference in just roughly a thousand dollars? Is there, do you have a preference over one?
So I.
The unit and that.
Yeah, I spoke with both of them. And actually, the Strogians guy was great when it came to the other two. So he basically asked me, he said, do you mind if I look at their quotes? I'm telling you right now, I can't touch them, but do you mind if I look at them? I showed them both the quotes. He basically explained to me that the quote for Bashons, he's not familiar with that brand of unit. So he really couldn't speak as far as longevity or durability of it. He did say that, I believe the Joy one is Lennox.
Yes, yes.
He did say that Lennox is one of the four best in the country. He said that he sells Lennox as his second option as opposed to the one that he quoted for units, almost 9,000. So his recommendation would be depending on what you're looking for. He said they're probably both comparable units, but he's never ever heard of the copier that was quoted by Bashons. But they all carry, they both carry a warranty.
Do you have a preference?
I don't. I don't own that much of air conditioning.
Do you know? No. So do you know like the turnaround being, if you recall, like this one?
It just depends. Yeah, it just depends. They, the Lennox units come out of Pennsylvania is what I was called. The some star that we have from Bashons.
Ten star.
Ten star. Those come out of, don't quote me on this, but I think it was important. So at this point, when I got the quotes, there was availability, but it's, you know, obviously for the Bashon quote today, it's been a few weeks to a month or plus. So I don't know what that availability still is. But the Lennox units, when I spoke with Strogians, which was probably two weeks ago, he looked up just for, just for letting me know why. He said that they were fairly readily available out of Pennsylvania. So from talking with all of them, they said as long as the unit was readily available, that they would move their schedules around. They understand this unit is slow early and it needs to get done. So they, all three companies said that they would move their schedules around and potentially as long as it was available, get it done with other companies.
I would make a motion to go with Joyce and chat. I think that given that.
Joyce is who did our main splits.
Well, given that I think it's a unit that's somewhat familiar versus one that is mine. We, you are. We had some information for my class. Sorry, I was a lot of, kind of, heard of that. So that would be my recommendation.
I'll second. In discussion?
So yeah, so I would say if we go that, as long as they can get it pretty quickly, if not, then.
Will you use it just fans?
Yeah.
So given that, as long as they can get it in a decent time period, that you're assuming it's not the best.
What was question? Olin Baker?
I don't know.
Sure.
Would you each copy?
I can send you a copy.
Please.
Yes. Thank you. Supporting documents to go with this as well. If you guys want to take one. Yeah, absolutely. So as you go, the workers are, have been in rough shape. We were able to get three of them up and running in a good, operable condition. We do have two of them right now. Between the two of them, as far as repair bills go, to get them up to stuff, we're looking at approximately, depending on what we have due to work, anywhere from 11 to almost $20,000. One of them is unexpectable. The other one is going to be in transmission. So with that said, we did have an offer from another local town back in March, April, to purchase a used vehicle, a Tahoe. Upon taking a look at the Tahoe, speaking with them, the original price they gave was actually going to be a great deal for the talent. But that price, over the course of a month and a half, two months, the specialism gradually increased. And it increased up to almost $35,000. And at that point, they said, well, why don't we look brand new? So I pulled up the state bid for police cruisers. And I looked at the Fords and the Tahoe. The price difference between the two is about $4,000 on the state bid. So what you have before you here today is a proposal to purchase the Tahoe, 2020 Toyota Tahoe, brand new. Purchase price on the vehicle is just under $55,000. They're going to give us $20,000 in trade for the two vehicles that I just discussed with you that have been need repairs. And then the outfitting cost and the stripping of those two vehicles came out to $16,803. Right now, our CRF, we currently have $54,520.71. Total cost for the new Tahoe, less the trade, the outfitting is $51,800, leaving us with $2,720.71 in the CRF. So ultimately, we could downsize the fleet from five vehicles to four, which I think is still more than adequate at this point, depending upon what the, what the board and the town's future for the agency is. But I think in the foreseeable future, four cars is more than the need at the current time. So it would down, it would downsize the fleet from five to four. And it would be a brand new vehicle. And like I said, it would all be taken out of the CRF.
So a quick question for you, what police need to.
Yeah, police need to.
So a quick question for you, Scott. And I know you had told me this before. Right now, what we have, what are the vehicles that you're giving to pick from, from police?
As far as, you mean as far as new purchase of the.
Yes, yes.
So right now, you have, obviously, there's lines of pickup trucks, Ford F-150s and Chevrolet 1500s. You have the Tahoe. You have the Ford, what do they call it, the interceptor, what we have now. And then you also Dodge, at the current moment, is not producing PVB vehicles. But that's kind of up in the air and seems to keep flopping. There was discussion that they were going to be obsolete and no longer making. But now I recently heard that there's the potential in 2026 that they may reintroduce PVB vehicles, which is police pursuit vehicles. And I think that's about.
So we can spread it.
Realistically, it's for pursuit vehicles. Vico process there, given the gas mileage wise, they're approximately the same with a few made twin system. Chevy does make a laser now as well. It just came out, it's a hauler. Well, unfortunately, I thought this is something I've interested in doing at this point. Maybe down the road, but it's just not, not avenue that I'm looking to go down. So I basically broke it down to Tahoe, the Ener Center. And for the cost difference, the size difference, the length difference, I think it would be far beneficial to go with the large vehicle.
In all the money is coming out of these things, you have a lot?
Yes. With the two vehicles being traded in.
Yeah.
Anybody want to take details?
We, Ray, he has worked some details for the town in Middleton. But beyond that note, as I'm here, 10, 12 hours a day. I did speak with Officer Hudson, who is coming off that deal a little soon. And she has already asked when she would be able to work details. And I explained to her as soon as she got the sole status. So realistically, I would say by the end of August, she's going to be able to work details. I will share the new judicial offer today with accepted as well. So that will be another officer, which will let me free up some more time and some more availability. I know myself, I love to work some more tech. That's a problem with time a lot of. So as we staff, I think that'll just get more and more. There are a significant amount of outside details not here in Middleton, but throughout the county, throughout the area. They never knew this, how they're looking from day in and day out, looking at the levels they're outsourcing more or. There's, the town of Lee, the town of New Fields, they're working late to break down in farming. So there's not a shortage of them. It's just a matter of having personality and personnel.
Discussion?
I'll make a motion that we wait to honestly, you know, 2025, which I'm a town with the mission that we're trading able to. Money is not the least detailed.
Sure.
My sentence. Any discussion? Olin Baker?
Hi.
And I do have all the documentation. If you guys want to see specs or which economy. So courts hold the state contract right now. I spoke with them back in May when I started researching all this. And at that point, they earmarked one for us with no obligation. But every time they had something like 250 that were coming in. I spoke with him this past week, and that will actually, should be touched down on the ground on the year. With the two that would be selling.
Trading.
Trading. What would that be like? That would be done at the point of purchase, just like when you, just like when you buy your own vehicle. Are they, are they ready to buy it now? Yes. Yeah, no, they have a wholesale one. So literally, when we go to pick up the new one, we're driving the other two over there, drop those off, just like, just like when you buy a new vehicle. Yes. So again, this is just a proposal, and you have the supporting documents, if you're going to look at them. I mean, that would be you, but that's your tail plan. So this proposal is to upgrade our firearms. The current firearm that we carry is a six-hour P320 that was purchased in 2019. Based on the amount of firearms that we have, the agency currently has 15 firearms, which they'll think we need 15. So I've talked to a couple of vendors, as far as that goes. We would be looking to upgrade them to sticking with the sick P320 platform, but basically upgrade it to all of the new and updating technology. The current guns we have are simply a gun with the, with iron sights. The rail itself is not optional for an optic. Most agencies have gone to Red Dog optics at this point. These guns are not capable of accommodating that. You can replace the rail system on them, which will then allow you to put an optic on it. But at that point, you're almost at the cost of a new gun. So I put the proposal together to basically trade in the 15 guns that we have, purchase eight new guns with the Red Dog, Red Dog optic system on them, and also with the lighting system on them. Because the current guns we have don't have lighting system on them either. And with holsters. So the purchase cost for eight new guns, with everything that I just outlined to you, is $7,489.60. And that's purchased straight, direct for the city. But holsters, I wouldn't be looking to buy any holsters because they don't have any officers. But I would be looking to purchase five holsters at the current moment, which comes up to a total of $760.50. Making the total purchase, $8,250.10, less the tradings. They're going to give us a total of $4,875 for the guns that we currently have on trade. Giving us a total purchase cost at the end of $3,375.10. And at that point, I'd be like, come up with something.
I have a question, you are replacing them with P320s?
Yes.
Any other questions? Question on your head, it's a fire, it's a police, it's a... Any discussion? Alan Baker?
Thank you.
Any word on that?
Yeah, Brad is, we're working on your celebration of this concept. Hopefully you'll have a thing on that, food truck, games, we'll have a highway fire. Police department out here, hopefully they clear it out, of course.
I have multiple requests out for that event right now. Although more probably talent in the week, whatever, request of the state police to attend the event. I've also got a request out to the sheriff, county regional SWAT team to attend the event, along with a lot of organizations.
Yeah, we got this. Um, we have all kinds of stuff to sell.
Well, I would tell them that started.
I'm very...
Thank you.
Jay?
Do we get the fly, or can you come back on?
There is a fly on place, but we need to get it to put up or...
I'm working on this fly.
Yes, so you'll have, we'll have a conservation...
A party night event.
Well, conservation there, and watershed, and the HMAS, Alcatraz, yes. El Paso, um, I'm excited about it. I mean, we're going to start selling popcorn, hopefully the general guy will make it. So rain, yeah, rain control. Rain control, hopefully. Waiting for that. We're going to help run our parking lot here. Got it, yeah.
Anybody else?
I do have one other thing, real quick, just because it just came politely today. Just want to get the board's approval, so I wrote a grant for ballistic vest. I wasn't anticipating a response on the grant for probably a week or two, but they actually responded to me about an hour ago. Basically, in not so many words, approving us to move on through the next stages of the process, which basically beats me just signing on to approve the grant. I just want to get you guys' approval to that, it's a 50-50 match. So if we buy a ballistic vest for somebody, they will reimburse us fiscally 50% of the purchase cost.
What do they typically run this for?
The vest, so we're getting a new style vest at this point. I haven't gotten the exact price of the new one yet, but they average anywhere from 700-ish to maybe 1,000.
So we could use this newly created CRF?
Yes, yes.
Unless you can...
No, it was my intent to take those out of there to begin with. But this grant will just potentially, I don't know necessarily if it'll hit us for fiscal 2025, but it will definitely be on board with it, it'll hit us for fiscal 2026 with a 50% match. So annually, once a year, we'll submit and they'll reimburse 50%.
Good. I got, I have one comment I want to make.
Sure.
So for a number of years now, there's been a mistake in the town report. It has reported that the conservation commission has a capital reserve fund. There has been, there has never been a town warrant to create a conservation commission capital reserve fund. And you'll see it, and if you want, I'm just bringing this up now because...
Before we do the votes?
Yeah, it gets, it gets rather hectic around a town report and town warrant time, doesn't it? But I can, I can, I've got my town report all marked up, and I can go years past where it's been brought up. The auditors never caught it, but I'd just like to get that corrected in the next...
Is it sure?
Or, oh, pardon me?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
Can you just tell us what needs to be corrected?
Oh, is that what you, like the next step, would you like me to, you know, go show you where? It's, it's a couple of times if I, if I, so I just wanted to get out there.
Okay, yeah. Anybody else? I will say that we did receive the money, the fire truck has been sold to the town of Charlotte, Maine. We received a check, that's been deployed, well, it's quite a deposit, it's been provided. We've received the check, so that's all taken care of, and that's benefit for the town, yes. I don't know, anybody else? Make a motion to a jar, 715? Alan Baker? Nice, come there, everybody.